Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Atsigo City Council meeting. Padre, can you have the record show that tonight is Monday, April fourteenth? This evening, we have President, our Attorney, our City Planner, our City Engineer, along with all Council members and our City Administrator. At this time, I'll ask for all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first item of business this evening is a special presentation from the Bank of Elk River.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Here tonight for to mark our twelfth year of our relationship with the Bank of Elk River. The Parks and Recreation Department wanted to come before you and express our gratitude. The bank upped their yearly donation to eighty-five hundred, which is awesome. So we're excited to offer that many more things in two thousand and twenty-five. And we're very grateful for their partnership. This year, as I mentioned, marks twelve years of this fantastic partnership with a grand total totaling seventy-six thousand five hundred dollars the Bank of Elk River has contributed over those years. So here tonight, we have some bank members in attendance, and I'm going to invite Lebran and Felzer to come and speak on the behalf of the bank.
Madam Mayor, staff members, City Council. It's a pleasure to be here. I would like to introduce my colleagues. Julius Schreifels, our Marketing Director and Communications, Alex Safe, our Branch Manager here at the Atsigo Facility. And as many of you know, the Bank of Elk River has been a longstanding partnership with the city of Atsigo, and we're grateful for that. And again, we're pleased and excited to be able to sponsor the Parks and Rec events this upcoming season. And with that, I just simply want to say thank you to all of you. So thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
At this time, we wanted to check presentation, and we'd like council, we'd invite council to come down, take a picture with everybody.
Great. There we go. Now we're looking, cheese? And let me get Julius one. And okay, see everybody. Ready? All right, we will move on to our next item, which is our open forum. This is the portion of the meeting where you can come to the podium, state your name and address, and limit comments to five minutes or less. But anyone would like to speak at this time.
Good evening, everyone. Brittany Moore's eight-nine-nine-seven Neighbor Avenue Northeast. I am here tonight to express my concern for maybe, shall we say, the mental health of a fellow colleague. Seems that there are a disconnect between what maybe he's hearing and putting out there to the residents of Atsigo, and I think that's a little bit of a disservice. I do question actually his ability to effectively and efficiently promote and represent the city. I think, you know, I ran across my, here's my concern is that I came across a, an article that was written. And it was recent, and it just suggests that they they're suggesting that maybe, actually, it's almost like false accusations. Just to begin with HPC, there is paragraph three, and this would be Councilwoman Dunlap, I am referring to your recent article. You just sort of talked about how your perspective of the building and how you felt that was being neglected. You also had expressed that we were doing the city financial harm by not doing anything with that building, and you mentioned that you were at a budget meeting and that you brought this up. And at that time, I was also present at that meeting, and it was discussed that to put anything into that building at that, at this time would be fiscally irresponsible because of County Road Thirty-Nine expanding and also Nashua having a roundabout there. And at that time, there was no, you hadn't suggested any other building repairs or maintenance. I can also attest that I was the liaison for HPC, and I had asked Kevin, Kevin is here actually, which is perfect, but that he checked on the building and checked the windows and the roof because that was a concern of HPC. And he was going to have staff check on that quarterly and just keep an eye on things. So when we talk about being fiscally responsible and prioritizing projects of the city, the next page that you wrote was an article, or continue the article about how we have a I actually have it, I can tell you. The fire department, that's a big concern of yours is that we're, you know, investing in a fire department and spending too much money. So I'm not sure if you remember, but you were at approximately maybe five HPC meetings, and you were assigned the alternate liaison. But yet you chose to go to public safety, and you didn't really attend the HPC meetings. So there's a little bit of lack of maybe information on your part in how you are relaying information to the rest of the city and the residents. You know, I, the truth of the matter is that we are actually investing in our history, and we're stopping neglecting the things that we need here right now, which is a fire department and a fire station. If you continue to wait, it's just going to be more expensive than that. Is that fiscally responsible to do that? In my perspective, as you say, you, you say that often in your own films. My perspective is that it's not fiscally responsible to keep waiting. You have a duty as local government to provide public safety to the city of Atsigo. So again, I just, I'm a little bit, and I'm being honest, I mean, I genuinely am being caring, and I'm really kind of concerned with like either your hearing, your comprehending, I'm not sure. But something is being very much misconstrued with what, with your words that you're putting out there. So I think that's it.
Is there any other comments for open forum?
Gabe Davis, six-six-eight-nine Packard. Saturday, I stopped by the by the park. I was surprised to see there's about two thousand people out there. Yeah. Lot of kids having fun, lots of grandmas, grandpas, parents. And so it's nice to see such a turnout. Next question I've got is the mulch piles you got by the fire department, all those chips. What's the city going to do with them? Are they going to be open to the residents to take those chips, or is the city going to use them? Or what's going to happen to all that? All the shredded trees and stuff.
I can turn this over. Counsel won't have an answer to that, but Adam.
Mayor, I don't have an answer for you tonight, but I could certainly check in with our construction management team and get a response back to the council.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I can, I can just say that the reason we're leaving them on site right now is we didn't want to track out dirt till we have a construction or trans built and that. So that's why they're being left at this time. I don't, again, same with the city administrator. I don't know what the purpose is for, and if people can have one.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll get back to you later this week.
Okay, thank you. Right, any other comments?
Hello, Council and Mayor. Jeannie Holland, County Commissioner. Just wanted to let you know that the HOA bill that I've been working on for, on behalf of Atsigo residents has cleared the judiciary. It has cleared the housing, and that's the Senate Judiciary, so it's, it's cleared two of the main hurdles. It's now going to hit the floor at some point, and it's just going through the House right now. The sad thing is that now the big guns are coming out. All the big construction managers have came out with their lobbyists. So they're getting hot and heavy. So if you know anybody that has been affected, they should write or call the, their legislators, anybody on, anybody that they have any contact with, or even the governor. We're just really hoping that we can, we can have this bill. It will really benefit the residents of all these HOAs. As you know, I've said before, eighty-two percent of new homes are in HOAs, and one point two million people in Minnesota are under an HOA. The sad thing is, is people say, well, I buy a house not in an HOA, but that's kind of not the, that, that isn't the case. There's, there's a lot of HOAs. So we need to protect the residents, and you know, so that's where that's at. I was talking to Mayor Stock Camp earlier. Daycares, we're seeing a lot of onerous regulations coming down on our home daycares. We, when we were down on EDP Day, me and Commissioner Shane and the Wright County EDP were really pushing for we need daycares and don't mess with the, the home daycares. Kokato in the West, they have no daycares, but Kokato specifically is one city that has no daycares because they had three home daycares that quit. And then, you know, we, we want them to be licensed, but if they have all these onerous rules, they're going to go rogue. And that's not anything we want either. We want good, healthy options for our kids. And if we, if parents, if parents don't have daycare, then one of, one of the other can't work. That helps, that hurts our businesses. It's a, it's a vicious cycle. So we're really advocating for that as well. But the big piece that's really alarming is that the, it really sounds like the governor's proposal to put the DHS the, the funding for men choices, so our elderly in, in nursing homes. That is going to be coming down to us to take care of. It is a unfunded mandate, of course, so they want it to come out of property taxes. We, we figured that would be two million dollars. That would be, and every million is a levy point. And we're thinking that we're going to probably be in a levy that might be a double digit. We're really nervous about that. Along with that is that every school is going to go out for a levy. I know Saint Michael Alberville just said that they were going out for a levy or a bond. They're going to try to creatively, the superintendent said, try to figure out, you know, how to get that passed, which will probably be impossible if every of these taxes are going to go up. Because I'm sure you guys going into budget season are already seeing increases. And so that all just goes on property taxes. Like, it's very just, it's, it's very discerning. Disconcerting because, you know, we're going to, I don't, I don't like the idea of taxing people out of their homes, and that's kind of where we're at. We've been down there a lot. We've been fighting. We're very lucky to have Senator Hoffman, who's the head of HHS. We told him that, you know, we are not in favor of it. He too knows that pushing it down will affect his constituents, especially in a growing area with young families in Atsigo. He has the part of Dayton that is in Atsigo. But I'm very great advocate for Wright County. So I don't know, it's not looking pretty, and it sounds like from our legislators that that's probably not going to go away. So if you get a chance as City Council members, please send letters, make phone calls, especially to the governor to say, you know, because that is specifically in the governor's budget. Of course, they'll have to wrestle it down. All branches have to wrestle it down. But unless they do some drastic tax cuts, I, I, we really feel like it's, it's coming our way. So just wanted to make you guys aware, because you know, you're going to start thinking about that coming up this summer, and yeah, it doesn't look good.
Do they get any constituents that come down, their homeowners, so they have to look them in the eye, you know?
You know, Representative Hudson and Senator Lucera always say they love to have constituents come down. I think, I don't think the governor's had a press conference. I don't think the governor has been seeing eye to eye to any of his people. I, from what I see, he'll go to other states, but he, he will not have a, a look-you-in-the-eye experience. But I, I do feel like if we can flood the phones, his especially, because we don't, we just don't want, especially in Atsigo, there's a lot of young families that, that would take that burden, and it's just not good, so.
Well, especially to the, you know, the, the people who have been in Atsigo forever, the original people in this area in Wright County, they're going to get taxed out, like you say.
Yes, yes.
You don't want that.
And if there's a day that you guys want to go down there and go and visit, they, they said they love to see their constituents and especially elected officials, whenever you go down there, they know you're, you have, you're backed by a lot of voices. So your voices are, are huge. So if you can go down there, I don't know if the League of Cities had their day on the hill. But I just feel like it's very important that we really hit, hit it hard and, you know, put out the word, if you have email lists or anything, just to have people flood the, the, the governor at this point, because we just, we can't. That, that would not be, that would not be a good thing for Wright County or any county and any residence, so.
Are you seeing it across the board, like in other counties too, or they?
It's going to be, they're going to do it to all the counties. I, I, we are a little lucky because we're growing. There is a lot of counties that are, that's going to really be a huge hit. And, you know, of course, the school districts, I don't think I've heard of one school that, that's not cutting. And I, Saint Michael Alberville said they're going to have to cut nineteen staff next year. So a lot of onerous, they, they too have unfunded mandates that were set, set at them in two thousand and twenty-three. And I'm sure the same thing goes forward with the Elk River School District, which ultimately, you know, I've heard that they're, they're closing open enrollment at the Rogers High School because they are bursting at the seams. Nobody's going to vote for a bond for high school for Atsigo kids, and we need it. We need a high school in Atsigo, so. There's so many pieces that we need to protect here and in our area. So any, anything that they can take off, the burden off of the county and the cities and the schools would be great. So didn't want to give you that doom and gloom, but that's where we're at.
What is the governor's proposal in regards to offset if he's pushing, if they are, if his, his staff and himself are pushing this burden onto counties, therefore citizens to pay for directly? Is there an offset?
Right now, from our legislators, there is no cost-cutting that's going on. They, they do need to start cutting, but that's nothing, no, nothing cost-cutting is on the table right now.
Yeah, but they're, they're taking, they're shifting a burden of costs and putting it on communities directly.
Correct.
Versus how it's been paid for, which is, I would assume through taxes.
Yeah.
Right? You know, income taxes.
Yeah.
So you would think that there would need to be an offset to support why they would do that.
I know. And the scary part is, you know, once, once they shift that to the, the counties, it's not coming, they're not going to take it back. I mean, then that's going to be, that's going to be our burden from here on out. So that's the scary part too, is that that aging population is getting smaller. Every year, we're probably going to see huge increases in our property taxes and, you know, and and, you know, we're already looking at what can we, what's not mandated. We're, we're going to go, we're already looking at it as, as well as Sherburne County has been looking at what they can do to cut and they, and what their analysis is going to be in. I, I don't think I've talked to one commissioner that's not very worried about this budget.
I can speak to the daycare because as Jeannie said, she talked to me before that. You know, that is obviously a huge concern for our businesses in not only Wright County but Sherburne County. I have sat in on a few of the coalition groups on that because those employers need people to show up to work, and they can't find affordable daycare. And so, yes, we have daycare centers being built, but as those are coming in, the price to, the price point to centers is much higher than home daycares, and it's also a choice of what works for your family.
Right.
But as I told Jeannie, a lot of people are concerned with the language. It did get stalled last year with their initial turnout of what the, the changes the state wanted to propose and impose on us home daycares. And people kind of dug their feet in and, and sent letters to our legislators and said this isn't going to work for home daycares. So I gave Jeannie some ideas of how we could get the word out too, because there are still changes that will impact what the family's lack of choices if people shut down their businesses.
And, and to your point, I know my grandkids, they like the home care setting. You know, a lot of people like that small intimate home care setting for their children. They don't want them in the big daycare. And the other thing is, talking to Christine Treckler, who's, who manages all of our licensed, licensed daycares. She said, well, what she's afraid of, and she's already seeing is that people will be unlicensed then. And that's scary too, because then you're putting kids at risk. And, but she, she did compliment your group. You have a very, she said, very well-connected group of home daycares that have a great voice down at the Capitol. And so for that, thank you, thank your, your colleagues for that. Because we just really can't lose daycares. It would be very detrimental to our, our, this county.
Does anyone else have anything? All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, we are still under open forum. Anyone else? All right, we will close the open forum and move on to item three to consider agenda for approval. Does anyone have anything that they would like to add or delete at this time?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I move to approve the agenda as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Ryan, seconded by Tina. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Next item is our consent agenda. A motion would be in order.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, right.
I move to approve the consent agenda as written.
Okay, second.
Motion by Ryan, seconded by Tina. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to item five point one is our cold storage facility. I'll turn this over to Adam.
Mayor, Council, thank you. Back in February, the council authorized an advertisement for bids for the cold storage facility. Bids were opened on March twenty-seventh. There was a good turnout with twenty-nine total bids over six scopes of work. So your packet materials kind of outline the project. There is a memo from the construction manager's team, K.A. That includes the low bidders and also the bid tabulation for the entire set. There was one withdrawal, so that letter from that firm is included in your packet. There's a project cost summary, breaking down construction and hard and soft costs. There is a resolution for the council to consider awarding bids, and there's also a contract amendment. So as we proceed through these projects, once you hit construction phase with the construction management team, there is an amendment to that contract to take it from pre-construction throughout the construction phase. So with that, we have Ben Albrecht from Carl Anderson here this evening can answer any questions from the council.
Good evening.
Madam Mayor, City Council.
Hey there.
Can I answer any questions you have?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So when, when there's people that are, and you're looking through your bid tabulation stuff, it's bidders are identified as rejected, did they not meet the qualifications, or did they not bid the products that were specified?
Yeah, so if you go to, if you go to Work School, AD, for example, both acre doors and overhead doors in Northland did not include the required P and P bond, or excuse me, bid bond and responsible affidavit form.
Okay.
So those eliminated those two bidders from contention.
Okay. And Ram?
Yep, Ram Building, they withdrew their bid at last second, so you'll notice their bid value is zero dollars.
Okay.
They essentially withdrew.
That's the withdrawal. Okay, got it.
And then.
The withdrawal is on the, I thought it was on the back.
Yeah. So you had two withdrawals?
We had two withdrawals for Work School AD. We had Ram Building withdraw from the thirteen G Old Streamwood Building Package. And then finally, Work School thirty-one A, Julian M. Johnson was the withdrawal letter that you're making in your included packet.
Okay.
And they missed scope items. Slab on grade was missed and site fencing was missed. Too large.
Important, yeah, a little critical.
Well, their number looks really good. So had they not missed that?
No, I appreciate you scoping it. Okay. So then, who went, lost your buildings?
Yep, and Rachel Contracting was the next low bidder for Work School thirty-one A, we worked back it, and they had everything during the post bidding process.
Yep, I'm good with both of those.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, great.
Adam, could you, maybe for public knowledge for people who, who might not know how the bidding system works, maybe just give a high overview?
Mayor, sure. So it starts with an advertisement for bid authorization at the city council level. We then post that to a public website. We post it on the city website where contractors from different work scopes are able to find plans and then put together a bid. They submit that by a certain day and time. Those bids are then opened and our team at K.A. and then will go through those bids to be certain that they meet all the requirements. So the default is always lowest responsible bidder, but as Ben outlined, there's certain requirements outlined at state statute and also within the bidding documents that those contractors are responsible to submit, and that's why you see some of those rejected included here.
Very good, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? The motion would be in order?
Madam Mayor? I move to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash one six, accepting bids and awarding contracts for the Atsigo Cold Storage Facility project. And to authorize the city attorney and cross Anderson. And to authorize the city attorney and cross Anderson to prepare the A I A A one three two dash two two zero one nine contracts and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the finalized agreements.
I second. Motion by Ryan, seconded by Michelle. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I move to approve contract amendment number one to the A I A C one three two dash two zero one nine construction construction manager agreement between the city of Atsigo and Carl Anderson Construction Company.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, seconded by Tina. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to Parks and Recreation, six point one is the paddle port stations.
Mayor and council, good to see you again. Uh here before you tonight, your packet. Um I we are asking you to accept a quote and authorize procurement of paddle ports and potentially adopt a resolution if uh you guys so choose to move forward with this from the Friends of the Mississippi River. I do have a statement if you guys do uh choose to move forward from Friends of the Mississippi River. They're not able to attend tonight's meeting, but they do have something to for me to read uh on their behalf. Um but some backstory on this. Uh this has been talked about since twenty seventeen. Uh many of you are aware, have seen some iteration of this. And uh we're lucky enough now tonight to present before you the potential for a paddle port system. Uh what is a paddle port system, you may ask? It is uh up on your screen right there on the right side. It's an enclosed trailer with eight lockers on it that have an electronic keypad on them. People would either go on their uh laptop or their cell phone. They would choose to, you know, rent the units. Uh they'd get sent a code, they'd sign a waiver and be able to rent either. There's two tandem kayaks in these trailers and there's six singles. All life jackets are included with rental and paddles. Um so the proposed plan is to put one of these at the Noran Landing Park. Um and then you would paddle uh eight miles approximately down to Carrot's Landing Park. And this was budgeted for in the two thousand twenty five capital improvement plan under Fund Two O Three Part Development. Uh we had set an allocated around eighty thousand dollars for the purchase of these stations. And staff went out and solicited uh quotes from different vendors. There's no vendor except the Soul Source Systems Services LLC who provides units such as these. So the total price for those units with the trailer was seventy thousand three eighteen ninety, which was below the budgeted amount. Uh after kind of talking through this with Friends of the Mississippi River, who we do work with at Davis Farm Park, and tomorrow night they're presenting before the Park Commission Highlands River Point Natural Resource Management Plan. Their ultimate goal is to have more park users or residents, whoever use the Mississippi River, so really fit their mission statement. So when we kind of pitched the idea that they had some money from Cargill that they were looking to spend, they offered to generously pledge uh eight thousand dollars towards this project, which reduces the total cost to sixty two thousand three eighteen ninety. Um so after you rented your unit up at Noran Landing, you'd paddle down to Carrot's, return your uh kayak into its locker. Staff would then ensure and inspect uh the equipment that was returned each uh morning before the river rentals would start at nine AM as a proposed operational plan. They would then, uh like I said, return to Noran Landing. They'd be available for rent by nine AM. People are able to book these twenty one days in advance. And they're able to book right up to the nine AM start time. So uh that's kind of staff's plan is each morning to get in and check that uh which units got rented, return the rented units back upstream. Uh the proposed rate is uh thirty dollars to rent for the day. So we didn't want to really put time limits on it with this being eight miles if you wanted to stop at an island. If you wanted to fish, have a picnic, recreate on the river, we didn't want to put you on a stringent timeline that you had to be back by this time. So the proposed operational plan is nine AM to five PM, uh which was vetted through the Parks and Recreation Commission and uh recommended uh it be uh kind of adopted. And so there are late fees if your unit is not returned, if you miss the turn, if it ends up in the if it's down the river. Um it's a hundred dollars.
Take it home.
Yeah, a hundred dollars per hour that it's not returned. I did reach out to the vendor. If there's something missing, damage broken, uh you they we have a form that we would fill out, send to the System Services LLC. And the user would be charged for the damaged kayak, the unreturned life jacket, unreturned paddle. So there is an insurance policy there that the city wouldn't be out any money from that. Other than that, uh like I said, if it's accepted, I do have a statement from Friends of the Mississippi River at this time. I'll I'll open up for some questions.
Council questions?
Adam Mayor? Oh, go ahead, right. Um I I think when we discussed this before, there was a little bit of confusion around the time thing, and it looks like, if I'm reading this correctly, it's kind of cleared up. So.
It was.
Okay, so you just have to, I guess the way it works is you just have to go in a reserve before nine AM.
Yes.
And then any and then as long as you've done that, anytime after nine, well, between nine and five PM, you can go pick up that kayak. It just has to be returned by five.
Mayor, that is correct.
Okay, so anytime after nine, you theoretically, I guess, be able to rent for the next, you know, the following day or something, but okay.
Once nine AM happens, you can't run bad day.
Right. Okay. And then as far as the late fees and everything go, is that something that's handled by the by the vendor? We don't deal with the with um getting obtaining those late fees or anything like that?
Mayor, that is correct. So System Services manages all payment and then remits payment to us at the end of the month for our contract.
Yeah, we had, we went over it at the admin from our questions last night.
Excellent.
Cory?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Um you brought up some some good things at the admin meeting about other cities who who have this too. Could you talk a little bit about that for the public?
Yep, Mayor, so thank you for uh reminding me. Yes, I did reach out to the city of Cottage Grove, who does have these units and they rent out of them. Uh the unit in the presentation is actually a Thivers Park District of Mississippi Gay Area at the at the Coon Rapids Dam. Uh so both of them had very positive things to say. No issue with System Services LLC, very, very pro program and thought it would be a really unique and cool setting to be able to traverse eight miles. Uh Cottage Grove just rents kind of on a back channel of the Mississippi River. This would be truly a river route and unique to the area.
And that um any liability falls with the third party vendor, right, cities?
Uh the the city is covered, Mayor, under Parks and Rec community. So I did reach out to League of Minnesota Cities, our insurance provider, and uh city attorney Kendall ha- and I have had discussions as well.
Sorry, Dave.
Dave's like, I'll come back.
I'll come back.
Do you have comments on that?
Well, not just beyond what Nick said. We talked about it. I asked him to reach out to the league. He did. Uh they indicated that there would be parking rec immunity and insurance coverage. So the city's not immune to liability, but if anything happens, there should be insurance coverage.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Question in regards to service um or continued service um, you know, with, I would imagine things get wear and tear or that type of thing, that would be contract through same organization, the same provider?
Uh Mayor, actually, most cities and municipalities reached out to, they just uh they replace them like, say, they go to Shields, they find the brand of the paddles and the life jackets. They go to either Fleet Farm or, you know, Shields or uh it's not Cabela's anymore, it's Bass Pro Shop, something like that, so.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Um I was wondering if you can speak a little bit to where the funds come from? So they're park dedication funds, right?
Mayor, absolutely. I'll let City Planner Lick. He was really excited for this question, so I wanted to refer to him on this.
Mayor, uh so state statute sets up provisions whereby the city can require developers to make a dedication to the city for parks purposes uh at the time they subdivide property. The requirement is that they either dedicate land or the city can elect to require a cash fee in lieu of land uh be given over to the city. This money uh when cash fee is accepted can only be utilized to new improvements to the park system. Uh can't be used to do maintenance of existing facilities. What it is intended to do is offset the impact of new growth to the park system. So the need for more parks, more amenities uh to serve the growing population of the community.
Good.
All right, any other questions? I'm excited that we're finally at this stage. Thank you for answering all of our questions. We were very worried about how residents what if it's raining in the morning? So to Ryan's point, we we worked through all those things to make sure that everything would work out, so that the rentals should be seamless for the user.
Mayor, that's our intention.
Yeah, let's hope.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah.
One last thing. Um and we we talked about too, the the labor. You wouldn't foresee adding any labor because you would have staff over there kind of taking care of that area anyways, correct?
Mayor, that is correct. So we have staff in on weekends to check trash receptacles, uh change over the shelter between events and birthday parties and whatnot. So the weekend's not a concern in daily operations. Uh kind of why it's set up the way it is, is it aligns perfectly with our maintenance hours here at the city.
Sure. Good, thank you.
Okay, we have no more questions?
Just really quickly, I do want to point out the, you know, the our parks director's already kind of mentioned it, but the the Friends of the Mississippi River and the donation that they're um including in this uh is is really um great to see because the Friends of the Mississippi River, as you already said, they they've already done extensive work at um Davis Farm Park. They created this really in-depth natural resources management plan. I've been very impressed with what they have done for us. And tomorrow, they're going to be doing that, the Highlands of River Point. Reading through that plan, I mean, it's it's amazing the amount of work that they do. Um and now to give us eight thousand dollars to be able to do this paddle port thing, so it's it's really amazing. So thank you to them.
Absolutely. It was a generous surprise. Um and but it does, as you said, it meets their mission and their goal of getting more people on the river. So we're grateful for that.
Yeah, the the work that they've done has definitely made the area more enjoyable for our residents, so.
All right, motion would be in order.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to um motion to accept the quotes for the System Services LLC. Remacle Trailer Inc. in the combined amount of seventy thousand three eighteen ninety for purchase of two paddle port stations and trailer and transport trailers.
Second.
We'll do, we'll do. One motion and then two.
Oh, okay.
Second, Brian seconded.
And then motion to.
Wait, we got to vote first.
Ready to start.
Make a motion and second it.
Mayor, who's the second?
Ryan, I was, yeah. Is there any discussion on the first part? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to motion and adopt to adopt resolution twenty five uh twenty twenty five dash seventeen, accepting a donation from Friends of the Mississippi River.
Second.
We all want to second that. Motion. Uh Mo- Michelle made the motion, Tina seconded that. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. You do have their statement now.
I do have their statement.
Okay.
Alex, their conservation uh director. So he uh couldn't be here tonight due to some uh scheduling conflicts, but really wanted to make sure that he uh expressed his gratitude for our partnership. So he said, Friends of the Mississippi River and our land conservation team, right, to express our gratitude for the city's appreciation for our contribution to Carrot's Landing, new paddle port station. Friends of Mississippi River has enjoyed working with the city over the past two years to plan for and restore habitat and natural areas at city parks and to improve public access to recreation and the Mississippi River. This is just one example of the resource that we hope to bring to the city in years to come. Friends of Mississippi River sincerely sincerely appreciates the partnership and the work of Nick Jacobs and other parks in Rex. And we're excited.
Read that.
I did write that in there. And we're excited for the potential to continue and expand our great work together in the coming years. Uh relatedly, for uh council member Dunlap did request uh them to be here, and they were, like I said, they were sad they wouldn't, but here's a funding breakdown, which really puts into perspective what they're doing for the city of Atsigo. So the Friends of the Mississippi River Outdoor Heritage Fund grant for Davis Farm Park is seventy thousand twenty five dollars. Um and that partial restoration has been started. Fall two two thousand twenty three will wrap up by June two thousand twenty eight. Friends of Mississippi River's Cargill Grant, eight thousand dollars that you guys just accepted. Friends of Mississippi River National Fish and Wildlife Foundation Grant for Highlands, twenty two thousand seven twenty. Uh Friends of Mississippi River Outdoor Heritage Fund for Grant for Highlands River Point as well, hundred eighty seven thousand five hundred. Um which work will take place from June, July two twenty twenty five to June twenty thirty. The total amount so far, two hundred eighty eight thousand two hundred forty five dollars. So it's really impactful, the work they're doing.
Absolutely. Awesome. That's amazing.
Nick, are they, are we gonna have a like a grand reopening of Carrot's Landing at some point?
Uh Mayor just proposed this summer to have uh probably a July-ish timeline, but we'll we'll keep you guys posted. So.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we're gonna want to see a real copy of that, who's your name, since we all laughed at the same time.
I think that was Ross's idea back in seventeen.
All right, moving on to city council reports and updates. Does anyone have anything?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Um the OHPC will um not be meeting next month and will resume the following.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, a number of updates.
All right.
So for those who didn't attend egg hunt uh this past Saturday, it was a blowout. It was amazing. Um it was so cool. I've never been, I've been to a number of different um like Easter bunny hunts, you know, Easter related um scavenger hunts and stuff like that with my kids over the years, and this is bar none the best.
Yeah.
Honestly, that I've seen. So great job, the Parks and Rec and our all the volunteers. It was amazing. We had twenty two hundred people show up to the event. Um could be a little bit higher than that, but they're um double checking their counts um from my understanding. Um so there was a lot of different activities. There was touch uh touch a fire truck and a police car. That was great. Uh those gentlemen that were standing there um from Wright County, great guys. Um I'm really grateful for them servicing our community. Talked to them for a little bit. Um there was tu- uh plans of carrots. There was DJ with dancing. Um it's so cute, little kids out there jamming it. Um uh there was a bubble booth who um was um sponsored and uh volunteered by um former council member, um Brittany Morris. Um there was pin the tail, uh tail on the bunny, pictures with an Easter bunny. Which somebody was um in a costume that was sitting next to me here, uh which is awesome. Thank you for volunteering. Um and of course, the egg hunt itself. There was other things going on. Um there was also um a spring shopping extravaganza. There were some new um new people that will be um at the farmer's market. So they got their free day there if they wanted that. Um and so I talked to a couple of those people. Wonderful people. I'm looking forward to farmer's market season starting. Um so we have a number of online signups available, pickleball, yoga class. Um Atsigo's uh cleanup day is May third. So I want to remind everyone of that.
Yeah.
Because it is Arbor Day month or Arbor Month. Um so think of the planet and do the right thing. Um farmer's market, uh vendors sign up right now for people that want to do the um have their stations and stuff. Um so that's important, but um more importantly, for those that attend, like myself, it opens June twenty third. So that'll be coming up. Northwoods Community Garden Plot registration is open as well as um Prairie Festival sponsorship and exhibitors.
I just sent someone over to, they wanted a community plot.
Yes, on uh on a Wright County level, um there is um coming up here this month on uh April twenty sixth, Saturday in a couple of weeks here. Um it is a free day, free park day. So the state of Minnesota waives the entrance fees um for all seventy three state parks. They do this four times a year. So if you have nothing better to do on that day, I would show up. Um the next Park and Recs meeting is four fifteen. So that's tomorrow night.
It's gonna be busy tomorrow night.
Yeah, yeah. Public safety.
We do have public safety tomorrow night. Yep, yep. Does anyone else have anything under city council reports and updates?
I was just gonna say thanks to Nick and Connie. I I know how hard you guys work and uh it's flawless. I mean, everybody had a good time. Uh a lot of people. I could only see out of one eye out of that thing, but uh it was, it was a lot of fun.
Nick, did you have to go very far to pick up more more prizes and candy? Target.
This little baby came through and you're a little grandbaby.
Yes, so this is like the first egg hunt I've ever missed from once when I started it. And it was kind of this full circle moment that my family and my, I have a, I'm a new grandma, uh my grandson got to attend it, so. Um that was pretty fun to get a picture, to see how big it's grown. And my son, my own children, obviously, are old now. They haven't come to these events for a few years unless I make them volunteer. And so for them to be now um here enjoying it themselves. I mean, the text messages were like, holy moly, you're gonna need five Easter bunnies. There's so many kids here. So great. So um again, congratulations for another outstanding event. You guys work really hard too.
Madam Mayor, I learned a little bit at the event.
Yeah.
Such as you're the one who kind of started it.
I did start it.
Um.
I drug all my stuff.
What year was that again?
I've been here a hundred years. I don't. I've been here a hundred years, I don't know.
So it started out with, and then it's just kind of grown from there and evolved and amazing turnout. This was the record, a record breaking year, is my understanding, so great job, thank you everyone for putting on such a great event.
Even, you know, I think other, our neighboring cities were having that event too, kind of that same thing, so that's awesome.
Yeah, it's pretty exciting. We keep the magic alive here in those events, so. All right, no one else has anything, we'll move on to staff reports and updates. We do have, consider scheduling a special meeting on April twenty ninth.
Yes, Mayor, Council Chief Roche at the prior meeting did communicate a date of April twenty ninth. This would be a joint work session between the City Council and Public Safety Commission to be presented with additional operational aspects in the planning phase for the Fire and Emergency Service Department. So requested meeting time would be six thirty located here at the Prairie Center if the council would be agreeable to that.
Six. All right, we need a motion. Six thirty on the twenty ninth?
Mayor, that's correct.
Yeah, that works.
I'll make a motion to prove that date.
Second.
Twenty ninth.
Cory made the motion to accept April twenty ninth, starting at six thirty here. Tina second, is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion passes. All right, we are, so our staff reports and updates, Adam?
Mayor, just one additional reminder for the local Board of Appeal meeting is next Tuesday at this location, starting at six PM. One staff update, Sabrina shall be returning from her eternity leave later this week, so we're excited to have her return.
You're probably most excited.
Other than that, I've got no further updates, Mayor.
Do we have any updates on how many people potentially have signed up for next Tuesday?
I do not have that information, Mayor. Offhand, I have talked to one of the assessors and there's that. Probably around twenty phone calls that they fielded from owners here at Atsigo and they're hoping to resolve those with the property owners ahead of the meeting.
Okay. Great. Audra?
Thank you, Mayor, I have no updates.
All right. Eve?
No updates, thank you, Mayor.
All right. Dan?
Mayor, there is a planning commission meeting for the first time in six months. On April twenty first, next Monday at seven PM, we've got four items on the agenda, including preliminary plat and office building, environmental assessment worksheet and a zoning ordinance memo.
Madam Mayor, real quick, were those all public hearing items?
Yes.
Okay.
Ron?
No updates, Mayor.
To the man in the back. Well, there's too many. Kevin, do you have anything, but? Who are you?
Yeah. Jumping right into it, no, we're not going, we're just gonna pretend like everything's normal. All right, jumping right into it, I met with North Star Regional Treatment Center this morning. I apologize formally to Connie, I forgot to mark down that I need to take a room here. So we stole a room without.
Telling her.
So I apologize to Connie, so. Now she actually responded, she's like, it should be fine, so met with them. They've been really good about keeping an open line of communication with the Wright County Sheriff's Office. Kind of as I've discussed before, we get, we called there on a frequent basis, that's not necessarily a bad thing. I've tried to encourage them to call if there's anything that we could assist on or mediate, any sort of medical questions, anything that we could assist with. They want to keep an open, open line of communication with us so that we can make sure we're staying on top of things. Sounds like they've got a pretty good group of people that have graduated from the program who have actually returned back as employees. So that's been actually, we've actually been noticing that on our end, that some names have come back. Like, I think it's, it's good for just the overall culture there for some of the people that have come back and helped out now as employees. Again, they, they've been doing a good job of communicating with us and definitely have good things to say about it. Second piece, I know the I ninety four expansion thing is gonna happen. Mind dot usually does, I shouldn't say usually, Mind Dot does a good job with their modeling about what type of traffic congestion they can expect from all these different projects. However, one of the things that they can't anticipate is Google Maps. As congestion starts happening, Google Maps decides to go start throwing a whole bunch of detours all across the city and places that you wouldn't have expected it, because they recently spoke with a homeowner, not here at Atsigo, but how a road got redone and Google Maps started sending Amazon drivers directly through their property on a field road, so. And now that property owner can't get Google to turn that knot into a road. So they're like going through all these like formal ticket processes, so. I'm just trying to be aware that that very well may happen. Every time we have a road closure at Atsigo, there's, there's unintended consequence somewhere and so we just want to be on top of it to help with the traffic because the last thing people want is people driving through the neighborhoods at mock tents. So we'll be working on that and kind of keeping an eye as the, as the congestion happens. We're spending a lot of time on shoplifting cases, not that that's a gigantic surprise, Benny Dean's. A lot of the, a lot of the different retailers in the north side of the county, whether that's Target, Home Depot, I would say Target especially, they've been really pursuing aggressively the type of shoplifting that they're encountering. With that does come with a lot of time. We just had one here at Atsigo that ended up being like four different squad cars, three different locations, dealing with shoplifters that had committed a felony level amount. We had another one that literally the very next day, you know, Atsigo here, that ended up being another four squad cars tied up in two different spots trying to get that stuff solved, so Target's actually been great. They have a good reporting system so that it makes it really easy for us to turn that into a criminal case that we can present to the county attorney's office. They have pretty much everything ready to go for us, so as much as I want to say, man, we, we do put a lot of time and effort into it, Target seems to be doing a really good job too of trying to handle it on their end and usually, and fortunately, we have a county attorney that is very accommodating when we need to make decisions as far as arrests and or a booking or release, depending on the situation. So the final thing I have is you guys may be kind of experiencing it here, but we gotta, it's, it's happening, is the, our email domain is changing, so just be prepared for emails to be coming in as different names and stuff like that, and we gotta get all that transferred over.
Ben's gonna make it look like it's spam.
Well, it just, you know, I know how different organizations, so I already sent one to outside organization, they, it had been flagged as spam, a phishing thing or something like that.
Yeah.
So we're trying to slowly phase that in, so for now, it's, it will be received in one way and we'll get it figured out.
One question about Targets, you said that they're good partners. So if someone is shoplifting, are you guys getting the call the second they're out of their building? Because they have security too. Correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Bear with me, I'll, I'll try to keep it short. Is depending on the situation, so a lot of the times they have already dealt with that person. If they are calling in on somebody, typically that person has already committed a pattern of theft from Target. Whether it's our store or maybe a store, Coon Rapids, Monticello, whatever the case is, but they already have a tracker of that particular person. They know that for us to charge them with a crime, that person actually has to make it past the final point of sale. So technically, please don't, anybody take this the wrong way on YouTube. If you start putting a whole bunch of steaks or expensive merchandise in your clothing while you're walking around Target, that's technically not a crime. You have to walk past the final point of sale for it to be a crime. So we kind of have to, we kind of have to time that correctly so that we can prosecute, because if we go and go run up to them while they're in the store and they have everything hidden, they can go, oh yeah, you're right, I'm sorry, I was gonna, I was gonna check it out, I just, I didn't feel like grabbing a card, so I just started shoving everything in my pockets. So we kind of have to time that correctly, so Target knows that and so they will try to time it so that we can basically intercept them as they are walking past the point of sale before they get to their car, because we don't want them to flee their car.
Yeah, I just wasn't.
There's, there's.
When you said four cars are wrapped up in this situation.
It's a finesse because they may be calling like, hey, they're, they're literally leaving right now and we gotta come flying across the city. So one vehicle leaves, but then security will come out and confront them. So the one we had four, we had one running down Eighty Fifth Street, we had one that ran over to Holiday, we had a car that had taken off, but somebody still needs to show up to the store and be like, what kind of crime do we have to determine what kind of level of interception we should have doing? So it's a little bit of a finesse on how to.
Well, thank you for finessing and getting the criminal.
Yeah, thank you.
That was all I.
Does anyone have anything, Mr. Alden?
Welcome back.
Yeah.
Yes. Welcome back.
Thank you.
All right, if no one has anything else, then a motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Tina, seconded by Cory, is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, meeting is ended, thank you all for attending.